We're gonna actually split it into two separate presentations to you tonight, both of them fairly short, with the exception of the Iowa assessment. One's a little bit more in detail than we only have about a hundred slides. We guarantee you'll only spend less than two minutes on every slide.
It was at about a hundred and fifty.
I'm gonna do some serious, uh, story.
Yeah.
So, you may have read a week or so ago, The Courier actually got a jump on us and had already put an article in the newspaper with regards to it. Fortunately or unfortunately, their headline was Cedar Falls Students Make Big Gains in Iowa Assessments. And while when we visited with them, we were proud of the work that our students have done, sometimes when you hear the word "big gains," you think that we have, we were not very, doing very well to start with. And that's definitely not the case. Our students have performed very well on the Iowa assessments. What we did see is some improvements in some subgroups that we haven't seen in the past. And all of our students are continuing to get a little bit better. But if that's big gains, then I guess we'll take big gains every year as we go. So, I'll tell you a little bit about the test. So, you may pretty much be aware of a lot of this, but we are required by the state to give or administer the Iowa assessments to every student in grades three through eleven every year as we move forward. The tests are administered in reading, math, and science. The only thing about the Iowa assessments, there's additional tests in that battery of tests that we have chosen not to give as a district, a lot of it just because of the time purpose. We've had a lot of discussions about moving forward or putting the social studies tests back in. We just haven't made that move yet. But in terms of No Child Left Behind or what we're required by the state, these three assessments are the ones that are actually required by the state for us to give. We do have an option of when we want to assess students. As many of you know, for a long time, we assessed our students in the fall. We moved, three years ago? Four years ago?
Four, four. The 2011.
We moved to the spring assessments. And then that resulted in us being moved into a different norming group, which had some impact on our assessment results, but not a whole lot. But now, the majority of school districts in the state are moving to that spring assessment. And we're kind of being told that we may all have been required to move to the spring assessments through the state.
They say about eighty percent of the schools is what I've heard. And I don't, I don't know for sure, but if the truth of that, that eighty percent of the schools are not testing spring.
In terms of how we analyze the results as a district, and we'll share a little bit how this works tonight as well, we look at grade level. In other words, we look at fourth grade every year. We look at seventh grade, year to year to year to year. And so, that's comparing that grade level over time. It really helps us when we're looking at assessing our curriculum and what we're teaching at that particular grade level as much as anything, because it is different students every year. As students move through our system, they only go through fifth grade hopefully once. And so, they're only gonna be in that particular grade level one time. So, it does compare different students. But we've really focused, a lot of our efforts on, of course, is the growth piece or the cohorts. And there's two kinds of things that you'll see tonight, some reports that we share with you. One of them is simple cohort group. And that's basically looking at those groups of kids or classes of kids as they move through our system. And it looks at that non-proficiency, the proficiency, and the advanced proficiency categories, and what percent of our students fall into each of those categories as they move through our system. So, in essence, you're looking at the same group of students, but it may not be exactly the same groups of students, because certain kids move in and move out as they move through our system, of course. But technically, it's what they call a simple cohort, is pretty much the same group of kids as they come through. The other one at the bottom there is something that we just really started analyzing this year with the help of Joe Kramer at the AEA, and that's looking at growth bands. And we'll spend a little more time talking about that tonight with you. But that really is, I think, some of our most important data as we're trying to look at kids, individual students, skill by skill, kid by kid. It allows us to compare individual growth within what we call five growth bands or growth levels. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we're really excited about that data, because I think it's providing us with a lot more in-depth data, not only on individual students, but on the groups of students as they come through. Any more you wanna say about that piece?
I think the data, once you see the data, it'll help you understand why we're going that far.
You know, so, a couple of years ago, the state went away from national percentile rank and now looks at NSS scores. And that NSS is simply National Standards Score. And it's a specific score on the test, a raw score on the test, that students earn when they take those tests based on the results. And then depending on what their score is, is what category that they would fall into as far as proficient, non-proficient, or advanced proficiency. And you can see, if you were looking at a student's score of one forty at the third grade level, you can see that that would fall into the non-proficient category. So, every student gets a score in reading, math, and science. And these are what's determined at each grade level to be either non-proficient, proficient, or advanced proficiency.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, it's the same test, and so, what's changing is what scores are in each band, but the test itself doesn't change?
The test, the test changes. But the scores that students earn are, it's a raw score that they have on the assessment.
If I, for example, if I was in third grade and I could read at a certain level, I got a one hundred and seventy-five. And then I never improved at reading. And then in the sixth grade, I took the test and then I still get about a one hundred and seventy-five.
You could.
Assuming I was at the same ability level.
If you look at, let's say, take that third grade, and you look at a student's score, it might be in the proficiency range. And then you move to the fourth grade, they're gonna have to make some improvements to be able to be proficient.
Right, the cutoffs change, but the test itself doesn't.
Test itself doesn't change. They have different forms of the test, but the test per se doesn't change from year to year.
And what's nice about this is it's a range rather than a percentile rank. So, you can, it's easier to look at growth because of the range.
Is the test for sixth graders the same as the test for third graders?
No.
Oh, that's not probably the same.
No, it's not. It's a leveled test based on students at the third grade would start. And then it's almost kind of an overlapping test. So, fourth graders will take a portion of the third grade test and a portion of the fifth grade test, and then so forth. So, it kind of starts, it challenges kids at their highest level at each grade level. But the test for third graders is different than the test for sixth graders.
The test for a third grader from this year will be similar to the test for third graders next year.
So, if we look at some of our results from last year, and one of the things we do look at is how do we compare with our AEA counterparts as well as the state. And we've compared very, very well every year in just looking at that. And this is just looking at the percent of students proficient. And so, as you can see at each grade level, it might six, it might start at the seventh grade, oh, yeah, backwards. Our third graders, you can see, on third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, and this is in reading, the percent of students compared with the AEA and the state, and then our grades seven through eleven. At the same time, again, that's not as important to us, because as we move into looking at our students, we wanna compare ourselves with ourselves as we go. So, we're really looking at growth from year to year and how students are doing. So, the next set of slides will show you a five-year comparison of each grade level for in those three categories, non-proficient, proficient, and advanced proficiency. Again, remind you that this is different students. It's looking just at that grade over a period of time. So, you can see, this is our third grade reading scores. And as we look at this, and we'll kind of show you, the bottom darker red is our non-proficient students. That's the percent of students that year that were non-proficient. The light red is proficient, and then the lighter color at the top is advanced proficiency. And what our goals are, are basically to decrease the bottom and increase the top. We want more students to be proficient and advanced proficient, and less students in the non-proficient. So, you can see at third grade, especially the last three years, we've continued to reduce the non-proficient students.
And that's where the test changed.
I also, I brought that up. That was the next thing coming out of my mouth, is that that eleventh, two thousand and eleven, twelve is where that test changed. And so, we really have debated, should we even put the last two years on there? But we say it's good for comparison purposes to see that. So, that, again, is third grade reading.
And that's about when we started really working hard at aligning the core too. Eleven, twelve was mostly math, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, but didn't help them.
Does the gentleman from two sixty-seven tell us what is statistically significant in terms of change?
No, he hasn't. We could ask him to dig deeper for that.
Those are pretty big numbers. They, what do you like, probably statistically significant in terms of not the patient going down?
We were excited. Overall, we were excited with the scores. We said we'd celebrate this year, but we won't keep the party till the trend they.
This, again, is our fourth grade. And again, you're seeing a similar pattern of the percent of non-proficient students decreasing and the percent of especially advanced proficient students increasing. This is fifth grade. Sixth grade reading. Really made a huge jump in the sixth grade level with the advanced proficiency students, which was really nice to see. And then you get into seventh grade, and you'll see these kind of level off a little bit more at the seventh and eighth grade level. Although we continue to see, you know, if you just look at this past year, we saw some really good growth in almost all of our grade levels. Ninth grade. Tenth grade. Again, you're seeing a shrinking of that non-proficient group of students where you're getting, now, if you're under ten percent of non-proficient students, that's pretty impressive. And this is our eleventh grade. Okay, that's scores in the math that the state provides for us. And so, as you look at our math results, again, compared to the AEA, we continue to outperform the AEA and the state in terms of the percent of our students are proficient at virtually every grade level. So, looking at a five-year comparison, this is third grade math. Again, you can either focus on the bottom and the top.
And we're really excited when we look at third grade too, because we're hoping that the differences we're making in kindergarten, first, and second should really impact our third graders.
This is our fourth grade. Fifth. Sixth. Seventh. Eighth. Ninth. Tenth. And eleventh. And I think especially if, when you look at each one of those, even though we're going through them fairly quickly, I think especially if you look at just last year compared to this year, you're seeing a huge difference in the percent of non-proficient and the percent of advanced proficiency students. The AEA and state.
Not the elementary look yet. We have not dug a lot into science. But a year ago, they were looking at adopting next-generation science at the state level. They told us they were like ninety-nine point five percent sure that's the way they were going. And now, they've kind of backpedaled a little bit. We have looked at the concepts that are being taught. And we are teaching the concepts, but maybe not at the grade level. That will eventually come from the state.
And of course, at the secondary level, we're really trying to align with the Iowa standards, the Iowa Core standards. And you can kind of see over right there. And then looking at that five-year comparison, again, similar data is what you've seen, although in the sciences, maybe not as come out. You don't see the huge increases, but you're still seeing a decrease in the percent of non-proficient students and an increase in the percent of advanced proficient students. Okay, but as I said earlier, what I really focus is right now is looking at cohort growth and groups of students as they move through, individual students as they move through. So, when we talk about simple cohort growth, really what that means, it compares the test results of a group of students or a class of students as they move through the system, grades three through eleven. It measures that percent of students that are in those three categories, non-proficient, proficient, and advanced proficient every single year. And that's determined, again, by the NSS score. Okay, so if we look at just simple cohort growth for all of our students, well, I should also mention, we're not presenting any subgroup data to you tonight. It's basically the emphasis of time. And we also will provide you greater detail when we have our board retreat in the summer. So, you'll see some of this data as part of our district goals and so forth. But in the interest of time, but I want you to also know that we spend a lot of time analyzing other subgroups with the same format. So, this is, and I'll work kind of backwards. So, we'll start with our eleventh graders, or this would be our current senior class, and how did they perform from eleventh grade all the way back down to third grade. And so, as you can see here, and the percent of students, they started off, again, there isn't a whole lot of consistency across. We were up and down a little bit every year in terms of the number of students. Really perplexing is this past year with this group, especially when you're looking at the percent of advanced proficiency. Now, remember, one group of kids coming through, so you can't really maybe get any data to determine that other than the fact that, for some reason, a lot of our students may not have taken that reading portion of the test that serious as a junior. I don't know. We don't see that same data when you look at the math and the science. And what they determine is that they compare our students' average growth of students that are in that one growth band with the expected growth of students that across the state are also in that growth band. And again, we'll show you that that is also determined by the state in terms of what is that expected growth. And really what an expected growth is, it's the realistic growth that is expected for students within that growth band. In other words, if you look at this here, and over the far left, you've got each grade level and what their growth would be from roughly, like I said, third to fourth, or tenth to eleventh, or whatever. And the expected growth is based on a realistic estimate of what would students do in that particular growth band. You're not gonna expect a lot of growth of students that are traditionally performed in that low level the same expectations of growth as maybe some student that's in the proficient or the higher proficient bands. Yeah, so it compares the growth students that were third graders two years ago, you know, what were their fourth graders like? Then looking at seventh and eighth grade, or seventh growth to eighth grade, you can see, again, we made some outstanding growth. But also, remember, there's only nine students in that bottom category. So, one or two students can make a huge difference in what your growth looks like. But at the same time, it's growth in the right direction. And as you can see, again, as we move on, it is more difficult to meet that expected growth once you get higher up. But that's where our goal is. And then this is the one that we, you know, we're sharing the good news along with maybe the not-so-good news. As we look at those students, again, we had one student in the bottom growth band. That student made a lot of progress. But as you see, as our students moved on from that growth from eleventh to twelve, didn't make as much growth in reading. I think, again, it's a reflection back, if you go, remember back looking at their cohort growth, we saw a decrease in the percent of students in that advanced proficiency, for whatever reason. But we saw quite a bit of decrease in the expected growth with that group of students. When we look at math, again, those students that are in the lowest two growth bands made some pretty good gains. And that levels off a little bit as they move through our system as well. Seventh and eighth grade, we had a lot of gains at almost every grade level. And so, that was very encouraging to see that, that those grade levels, those students have performed very well beyond the expected growth. And grade eleventh, or tenth to eleventh, again, you only got two students that were in that bottom category. So, but that was good news to see those two make some huge gains. But at the same time, those two, five, two quarters growth rate is pretty small. And then you see the same data for science. Again, for third through fourth. And I think the AEA talked about not having that real focus on the science piece at this point in time, which in NSS is reflected a bit here of our data. Seventh and eighth grade, science. And then tenth and eleventh grade, tenth to eleventh grade. So, again, even though we're looking at, well, if you look at just the surface of some of our data, it looks pretty good. This allows us to drill down deeper and look at students maybe in a different manner and really find out, because we're splitting it into more than just proficient, non-proficient, or even advanced proficiency.
One of the exciting things, I think, is how we collect this data is we take and put it student by student. And all the buildings are together, so that way we can say, you know what, these are all of our kids as a district. We do not only think that way in the building, we think at the district level. And like at the elementary level, I know they're gonna do it at the junior high too. Like at Southdale, we've taken out all the names of the students except the Southdale students. So, you can sort the data in many different ways. You can sort it by pre-reduced lunch students, you can sort it by IEP students, you can sort high to low, low to high, and see where your students in the building compared to other students in the district. Because if we're all teaching the curriculum, our results should be pretty similar. And it's just another conversation that we can have.
Things finally, you know, we do know our students continue to outperform their U.A. and the state. We do know our percent of non-proficient students continues to decrease, which is what we report that continues to happen. There still are gaps between our subgroups and the rest of our students. We think those are shrinking. But at the same time, we always look at our special needs subgroup, when we look at our pre-reduced subgroup. Those students are not performing as well as the other students. So, we continue to work to address that. And then we do think that this focus on growth is the right work to be doing. We don't wanna mull ourselves asleep to say that, oh, you know, eighty percent, ninety percent of our students are proficient, so we're okay. We really need to focus and be better with every single student, student by student, skill by skill. All hundred percent of our students are supposed to be proficient, and we'll go through there and see where we're at. But at the same time, you know, it's one of those, and we said before, that we realize that there are some things in place with No Child Left Behind that most school districts, once they reach that certain level, are not gonna be able to meet. And unfortunately, the state of Iowa is one of the few states that does not have the waiver from the No Child Left Behind laws and required to follow this, these, this legislation. And so, we continue to figure out how are we meeting, or find out if we're meeting those annual yearly projections of progress reports. So, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but again, as far as No Child Left Behind is concerned, every public school and school districts are held accountable. And it's only for reading and math for No Child Left Behind. Science is not included in the math piece. Again, they switched No Child Left Behind to the NSS score as well. It's determined by the Iowa assessments. And again, every subgroup has to meet the same expectation. So, it doesn't matter whether students in the special needs subgroup, the expectations of where that student's score is the same as for any other student. They do allow us to apply some safeguards. You know, not a hundred percent of those students aren't proficient. If you make enough growth from one year to the next in reducing your number of, or your percent of proficient, non-proficient students, you can be identified as meeting AYP. Or if they look at a triennial, which is, you know, a three-year average, a two-year average. So, they try to look at several different ways that you are actually meeting the requirement, because in most cases, one hundred percent of your students are not gonna meet the qualifications proficiency. There are other factors that we have to meet, other indicators. Again, those include the state graduation rate, the average daily attendance, and whether or not we have at least ninety-five percent of our students that actually participated in the test. And then, we talked before about if we don't meet those expectations for one year, then we're identified as being on the watch list. And if you don't meet those expectations for two consecutive years, that's when the sign of the school in need of assistance comes into play. And again, remind you that this is a Title I legislation. In other words, it only impacts, officially only impacts Title I schools. But as a district, since we do receive Title I funding, we are required to meet those expectations as a district. But since several of our schools are not Title I schools, they may be identified as a school in need of assistance, but there's no sanctions that follow those schools, because they are not Title I. It's basically that we are required to assess all students on that day of testing, if, and if enrolled on that particular day. We do choose as a district, we aren't required to assess all grade levels three through eleven. The legislation basically says three through eight and eleven. But we choose to assess our ninth and tenth graders as well, just for that consistency and be able to look at each of the students who improve.
And the AYP is also based on FAY, the full academic year students.
Now, this is why you don't see every school in the state of Iowa that's been identified as a school in need of assistance or a district in need of assistance is because of the number of reportable subgroups. You have to have a certain number of students in those subgroups before it's reportable. So, a lot of your smaller districts will not have the forty students in one of those subgroups that, so they basically meet No Child Left Behind on a technicality, because they don't have enough students within that particular subgroup.
Did that used to be smaller, forty?
Yes, it was thirty, it was thirty.
The score's gonna make it on, basically, they have to take it the first time they take the test. You can't take the test in the fall and then take it again in the spring and be able to count your best score. And at least from a perspective of trying to make it a little easier on districts, is we only count students if they've been in our school district for full academic year. So, if they move here after we tested from one year before, then when we report the scores next year, those still scores don't really come against them. And again, if we have students that actually are tuitioning into us for special ed purposes and so forth, but they reside in another district, their scores go back to their home district, just like any of our resident students that might be educated in another district. We receive their scores back, and their scores are a part of our report as well. So, how do we do? And this is where I think when you look at the different categories that we are required to meet, the participation rate, which the state goal is ninety-five percent at every grade level, we met that. You wouldn't believe the number of districts in the state that actually don't meet that. Our average daily attendance, for the most part, we met it. We've got a couple of them that are right on the border, so we're not quite there with some of those. Graduation rate, again, they look at a four-year cohort and a five-year cohort. So, they look at students, did they finish in four years and, or did they finish in five years? With the number of fifth-year programs out there, like our Transition Alliance program and so forth, they allow that fifth year. So, they look at another, but we have no trouble meeting that as well. You can see where the state targeted graduation three years right now. So, when you get into the academic side and we look at third through fifth grade reading, and again, No Child Left Behind looks at grade spans. They don't look at every individual grade, they look at grade spans. So, they look at grades three through five, and we've broken it down by each of the subgroups that we have enough students that qualify for reporting. If you see the little asterisks there, that meant that that particular subgroup increased their proficiency from the year ago. Okay? It doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't, may not have met No Child Left Behind. But in this case, you know, everything, every subgroup did meet No Child Left Behind, with the exception of our African-American students. But even that subgroup increased the percent of students that were proficient from the year before. So, even though we didn't actually meet it with that subgroup, everyone else did.
And with St. Harbor, that's where you have to move up ten percent of your students that are not proficient into proficient, and you also have to meet the average attendance.
And they first, they first look at biennial, then they go to triennial, and then they look at, say, Harvard, because of the progression that they look at in determining whether you met AYP. When you look at that same group of students or those grade spans in math, again, you see the different categories or subgroups. And with the exception of African-American students, again, we met the AYP expectations through those number of ways. And again, the asterisks are the subgroups that actually increased the percent of proficiency. Looking at grades six through eight in reading, again, virtually every subgroup, with the exception of our African-American students, increased from a year ago. And all of the subgroups in those grade spans actually met AYP.
And the subgroup size is forty now?
Yes. And this is our sixth, grade six through eight in math. And again, all our subgroups actually met AYP expectations. And grade eleven. These are the only reportable. These are the only reportable subgroups we had for grade eleven. But all of them didn't meet A Y P expectations. Math, again, met all of the expectations for A Y P. If you do recall, a year ago, we had a lot less stars on this report than we do this year. And that's one of the reasons we're pretty excited about it. So what does that mean for us in terms of No Child Left Behind? As a district, since we met all those expectations from a district perspective, we are on the delay for one year because we've only met, though, we were a dyna last year, which meant we didn't meet the expectations for two consecutive years. So then this past year, we did meet it, so now we're on a delay. We're still identified as a district in need of assistance, but we're on a delay for a year. Our hope is that we will meet expectations again, with this year's assessments, and we'll be off the list. Which is what happened with our reading proficiency, is that we were off for two consecutive years, and so we've been removed from the list. Some of these are things that we're doing anyway. And some of it's part of our P L C process and how we're providing interventions for students and so forth. But some of the other things, the additional reading teachers in our non-Title I schools and so forth, that really made a difference, I think for all students, not just the students in those Title I schools. We continue to offer some of those reading enhancement type courses, the intervention type things, the summer programs, some of those for those struggling students, I think that's made a difference. Our transition activities, or activities we do at both the elementaries and junior highs and so forth. So, these are, these are things that we've done before. The past assessment that we give at the elementary level is now being given to all of our elementary students.